Good evening. Welcome to our City of Pasadena, Texas Council Meeting, March 19, 2019, 6:00 PM. We'll be having Pastor Brad Cooper from Arash Church lead us in the invitation and Bruce Lehman will do the pledge, lead us in force, lead us in that. Thank you so much. Please stand.
You're up Pastor.
It's an honor to be here. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you Lord for your grace and your goodness, your love and your kindness. I want to now lift up to you Heavenly Father, the City of Pasadena, the Mayor, the Council, and those that you have placed in positions of authority and leadership. I ask for your hand of guidance and provision. Our prayer today is that your will will be done in this council meeting. Take what we have prepared and multiply our efforts as only you can. Remind us of your faithful provision when our efforts fall short. Blanket us with your peace. Keep us safe and guard our hearts and our minds. We also lift up our neighbors in Deer Park and beyond and ask that you would guide and protect those dealing with the chemical fires and ask that the fires be extinguished quickly and safely. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible)
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 Thank everybody for coming out this evening.
Hey Bruce, one second. Hey and Bruce, and before you speak please, I'd like the fire chief and our emergency manager director, if y'all approach the microphone over here and just give an update on the fire and an update with the city here, please.
So as you know, this is a very challenging event for southeast Harris County. This fire's been going on for a while. The City of Pasadena EOC activated about shortly after 10:00 AM on Sunday morning and we've been going at it 24/7 since then. We've kept a good situational awareness, been monitoring the situation about, on Sunday we initially began having Harris County Police Control doing our area monitoring, but shortly about 1 o'clock on Sunday, which was about two hours after, we determined that wasn't sufficient information for us. So we actually implemented a contract with one of our vendors and we've had real-time monitoring of the city and the air quality within the city limits. I can tell you that none of the readings have been above normal since minute one that we've had readings and they're still that way now. However, this is a dynamic situation and we've got to be vigilant and we're there till this is out and we've just got to be prepared to act if something happens and both the fire department, police department, EMS, and all the city resources are ready to act at any, at any point if situations change.
Just to give you a little information about the press releases that the company has done several hours, about every eight hours I guess, something like that. Yeah. As you all currently know, there's probably, right now there's six tanks burning. Just to give you a concept of what we're facing out there, there were, there were 15 tanks in that tank battery. Two of them were empty. Before it's over, all 13 tanks will end up burning. There's 80,000 barrel tanks and 80,000 is times 52 gallons. So there's 4.1 million gallons in every one of those tanks. There's approximately 54 million gallons of flammable liquid in that dock area. So that gives you some idea of why this thing is still burning. I would encourage each and every one of you, these guys are working diligently to protect the infrastructure out there, to protect the citizens. They have probably launched in excess of 200 million gallons of water and foam with this thing at this point and that's a conservative estimate. So they're continuing to work. They've hired a third-party expert contractor, Williams Fire and Hazard Control, who are very accustomed to handling this type of situation. They have some really comprehensive, high-volume delivery systems along with phone capability. Hopefully, hopefully this thing is going to be on the downside in the next few days. I would not be surprised if it's not continuing to burn probably Friday, maybe even into the weekend. That's a conservative estimate. We were out there Sunday for several hours. The Pasadena Fire Department has stood down from that operation primarily because we have a municipality to protect. So that's what we're doing now. We can continue to get updates from emergency management as well as the news, the news conferences. I would encourage you not to believe everything you read and everything you see. Facebook is probably, social media is probably the worst thing that you can look at in this situation. There's a lot of nonsense that gets put on, put on these social media sites. If it doesn't have City of Pasadena or City of Deer Park or Harris County on it, I wouldn't pay much attention to it, up to and including ABC, NBC, and CBS.[357.63][357.63](Laughter). Because a lot of the stuff that they're putting out is not accurate. It's just not. They got a lot of talking heads on TV. Everybody becomes an expert. There's a meme that's been flying around about how the, all the expert Facebook firefighters have now showed up, so they all know what they're doing. Honestly, those guys are out there working 24/7 diligently trying to handle this situation. But 54 million gallons of flammable liquid is a lot of product, so it's going to take a while. Try to be patient. Thanks.
Thank you all so much for the update. Okay Bruce?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. Want to recognize a couple of people, former councilman Leroy Stanley, Bill Pittman from Mount Vernon City Club. And I want to congratulate our pet adoption. They held a cause for pause a couple of weeks ago now and from what I hear, it was very successful. A lot of animals found their forever homes and I thank everybody that participated in that. Another thing I want to mention, I got a list here the other day and before I got the list, I had several people call me and asked me why there was somebody painting orange marks in their street and driveways and whatnot. What that is, I found out, is that's part of the $105 million flood mitigation grant that the city got. And I would like to say that in District B, we have 21 streets on that list and I'm very pleased that we're going to have that. And a couple of them I want to mention, Westy Lane from Scarborough to Fenfrock, Hempstead, Cascade, and one I get asked about the most, Perez, it's on there too. So anyway, if you see surveyors or somebody out painting in the street or driveway or sidewalk, it's part of this. We'll let it pass.
Thank you sir, Councilman Harrison.
Thank you Mayor. On a light note, I want to congratulate Emile Budat from Louisiana, I guess. He's been a 62-years Little League Commissioner, District 17, our Administrator. And Tom Edge, he's also Little League Commissioner now, he's got 50 years of service. That shows what our citizens do for the Little League and the youth of this town. And that's District 17 and Tom Edge is now the Commissioner. The second thing I want to discuss, I'll discuss it lightly, but I appreciate the comments by our fire chief. He mentioned confusion. I want to say thanks to our citizens. That's what we've been watching, Facebook, I've been like y'all, the TV, the newspaper, and you get too many different stories. And I want to say to the citizens out there, and I'm not going to make any comments, which I have about the whole thing, but be resilient and don't panic. And listen to our fire chief. He's a good man, he's always given us the proper information. I respect him for doing that. And, but the citizens want, since Sunday, the fire's been going on, I've heard, I hear different reports every day, every day. And they're not conclusive, so therefore, the citizens are the ones that I respect because I'm just like you. I watch the Facebook, I watch the TV, I read the paper, and you get different reports. So be calm, but listen and be concerned. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you sir. Councilman Casados.
Well, thank you all for coming out this evening. We appreciate that. I'd like to start out by giving my condolences to the Drake family. Randy passed away and, and I just want to say, to send out my heartfelt condolences to that family because he gave time, effort to this city and you know, anybody that does that, you know, we can, I guess, always appreciate that and, and like I said, I just want to send out my condolences to them. Also, I would like to, you know, kind of talk about these fires and whatnot going on. I actually work right across the street from ITC. I work at Total Petrochemical. And the last couple of days, we've been out there and, and watching this thing burn. We've had our fire brigade out there helping out with the situation. SEMA was notified, SEMA is a mutual aid that the plants have and all of the plants are out there busting their tails. These men and women are out there to put their lives on the line and I just want you all to know that even though you see this thing burning for two or three days, four days, five days, it doesn't matter. They are out there fighting. They're putting water, they're putting foam on this thing. They are giving it everything they've got. And I just don't want the public to think that, oh, well they're just letting this thing burn because they don't know what they're doing. That is not true. These men and women are giving it their all. They know what's going on and we ought to be thankful and thank God nobody's lost their lives. I mean, that's the main thing. And so, like I said, I just want to send out my prayers to them as well, to their families who, they're out there fighting that fire and their, and their wives, husbands, kids are worried sick about them. So y'all keep them in your prayers. With that, I pass Mayor.
Thank you sir. County Ray Wheeler.
Thank you Mayor. Just want to echo those remarks. It's a really dangerous situation and it is a lot of the fire brigades from the chemical companies and I know it's, fire departments from around Harris County to including the City of Pasadena Fire Department has been out there. Our volunteers have gone out to assist in that. And so, you know, keep them in your prayers. I know that these air quality monitor reporting are saying that the air is either in excellent or good condition. At the same time, it's 54 million gallons of hydrocarbons that are burning. A lot of black smoke. Several schools in the area have restricted outside activity and so it's probably a good idea to do the same thing until we get a full scope of the impact on the air quality and environment this has had. So if you can, limit your outside activity and just trust professionals that they will keep this under control. That'll pass.
Thank you sir. Councilman Caton.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out and being part of city government tonight. I like all those flashing lights that's going on in the audience. Just like to bring you, give you an update on the upcoming city council elections and all the early voting, including District F. The information we have to date, there's going to be two locations for the early vote, which are going to run between April 22nd and April the 30th. And it's going to be at John Phelps Courthouse, 101 South Ritchie Street, right there by 225, and San Jacinto College Library, 8060 Spencer Highway. Now for District F, some of the other districts are different, but here's the places I recommend for you voting at, is Turner Elementary, 4333 Lily Street. This is on May the 4th. Okay, also Miller Intermediate School, 102 Fairmont Parkway at Tulip Street. And the third recommendation would be San Jacinto College Library, although John Phelps Courthouse is going to be available again in some of the other locations. But these will be the closest locations for District F. Would that a pass?
Thank you sir. Councilman Bass.
Good evening. Even with the smoke, we still got pretty weather, as long as it goes north. I just want to tell you, you guys make me think Christmas is here with all the lights, but your bulb is burnt out, so you need to check it. And, and it looked like we've got the Miss Pasadena's here. We've got Leroy Stanley, a former councilman over here. And I did want to say, Mr. Randy Drake was a great guy. I went to school with him all, all the way from first grade up. We graduated together. So he, he had a tough fight this last year. And he's in a better place now and just condolences to Patty, his sister, and Lynn. And also, and we're missing our city secretary. Her sister passed Wednesday the 13th, so we want to keep her in our prayers and thoughts Last thing I just want to say is thank goodness that we have an industrial district because if we annexed these plants and that belonged to Pasadena, guess what we'd be in for in the coming months and years. It'd be a bad deal. So thank goodness we have industrial district.
Well, that a pass. Thank you sir. Councilman Shinkman.
Good evening everyone. Also too, want to send out my thoughts and prayers to all the first responders at the ITC plant and to the surrounding communities that have loved ones out there. I also want to thank our emergency management director Frank and our fire chief Lanny. Folks, they have done a phenomenal job with the amount of time that they've put in since Sunday, their preparedness and the way that they've communicated with our community. Please, please, get certified information. If we had a dollar for every rumor that was floating around right there, we could lower taxes. But go to the city website, go to the city Twitter page. If you have to call your councilman to get accurate information, call your councilman. But there's no evacuations, there's no shelters in place as of now. And if that changes, the City of Pasadena will activate every system possible and we will communicate clearly and effectively with all the citizens and residents here in Pasadena. Also too, would like to send out my condolences to Randy Drake's family and to Ms. Linda Rourke's family with the loss of her sister. We welcome Amanda tonight, so thank you for being here in her stead. You'll do her proud. And with that, Mayor, I pass.
Thank you sir. Okay, citizens wishing to speak, council first is Mr. Jerry Jones.
Okay Mayor, Councilman, and fellow citizens, I'm, I'm here to speak against what looks like probably a popular thing. I'm not in favor of the city being the business of putting on this Christmas light show. I think the Christmas light show, obviously there's enough people here, everybody throws in 20 bucks, you know, y'all could fund this thing yourself instead of spending my tax dollars to come up with $200,000 upfront, plus whatever it's going to cost for traffic control, the expenditure for individual families that want to come and see the lights, just unbelievable amount of extra expense that's going to be put onto, a burden onto the taxpayers. I'm not in favor of it, but I can see a lot of you are, so it looks like we're probably going to have a Christmas light show. I know the vote on the, the first reading, the vote went straight down the normal line, three to five, like 95% of the votes that come before council. I'm sure that'll happen again tonight. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Eric Mickey.
I would just want to thank y'all for letting me represent the City of Pasadena for the last year. My term will be up April the 18th, but I will always love and support Pasadena. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello Mayor and Council. That is our current queen, Ms. Betty O'Bannon. We are going to have the pageant on April the 18th, Thursday night, 7:00 PM at the Pasadena Convention Center. And that this year, we always look to eight, for eight to 12 people, to young ladies to enter the contest. We had 18. So I'm very excited about that. And I always try to entice the young ladies to come forward to sign up and that they get to be in the strawberry festival, the rodeo, stand behind the mayor and the city council. And I always say, they always like a young lady to stand right there with a crown and everything. The night of the pageant, we're going to have Randy Middles and his band, that is with the Old Town Opera. And we're going to have twin guitars and it's going to be dancing in the halls as we tally the reports and everything that night. It's just going to be a wonderful event. Thank you so much City of Pasadena for sponsoring it, along with STIGNA. And that, that night, you definitely don't want to miss. You may call Madison Jobe at 713-477-0175 to get tickets. And also, if push comes to shove, you don't really need a ticket because we really want everybody to come out there. We usually have about 800 to 1,000 people to attend the event and there is a round of applause when the winner is announced, as Betty, and then we have our other queens there, Jeannie and Norma Jean. And we just really appreciate everybody coming out and supporting us. Thank you very much.
Thank you Eric. I really appreciate that. Ms. Betty, besides your beauty, your talent was really good this, last year, so you earned it. We didn't give it to you. You bet. Ms. Ward.
Okay, on behalf of the residents of Willow Oaks Townhomes on Jenkins, I'd like to say hello to Mayor Wagner and to the Pasadena City Council, particularly our councilman, Don Harrison, and everyone present here at the meeting and also everybody who is watching the meeting on, on TV. Many of you have heard of the dilemma that we had concerning an abandoned house in our community that was destroyed by fire in December of 2010. The elderly owner of that house passed away from a prior illness, not having anything to do with the fire, shortly after the fire, and this left the house abandoned with a large hole in the roof and it had been empty for over eight years. We're happy to bring you the final chapter on this story. Since 1053 Willow Oaks is an attached house, there are eight houses in that building, the deteriorating structure was a threat to all the other houses, particularly the house on the south side of 1053. For example, Willow Oaks Circle did not flood from rising water after Harvey, but 1055 was severely damaged by moldy water when rain entered the opening in the roof and washed under the common wall, destroying the floors, furniture, walls, and insulation in the neighboring house. Also, the health of one of the residents in 1055 was permanently compromised by the mold that washed into the house. Help was needed to bring about a title transfer so that, through foreclosure on the house. And we're here this evening to thank Mayor Wagner and the City of Pasadena for providing the expertise and assistance that was needed to obtain that title transfer. We would also like, I would also like to thank some of the people who I dealt with personally, I don't know the names of everybody, but I dealt with Pope Curtis, Pasadena Deputy Code Enforcer, Gil Ariaga, the Senior Area Manager of the city's law firm. Beginning of the project, I had a meeting with Councilman Casados and I'd like to, we would like to thank anybody else who was involved in this project, the successful conclusion of it. The house was sold at auction on March 5th, 2019, and reconstruction began the very next day. So thank you to Mayor Wagner, the City of Pasadena for intervening and for making it possible for this health and safety hazard to be removed from our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you Mayor. Ms. Sherri Buffkin.
Good evening Mayor and Councilman. I received a voice message on Facebook this afternoon from a friend of mine in Sherman, Texas. And they said, have you seen this about the lights, Christmas lights in Pasadena? And I had not, so I read the article. And I just would like to give you a little bit of information. If some of you have not ever heard of Buffkin Christmas Wonderland, that was a show of lights at our home from 1992 to 2017. Our last year was in December of 17, we had over, almost 400,000 visitors that came to see our lights. Last year, our last year in 2017, we had 26,696 people that came through and toured our house. They didn't drive through, they got out and walked through. Some of them waited, stood outside in the cold for over an hour just to walk through. So just to kind of give you a little information, is there any interest in Pasadena for Christmas lights? Yes, there is. And if you have any concern about the cost, we had visitors from all over the state of Texas, we had visitors from all over the United States, that it was a family tradition to come and see the Christmas lights. People like Christmas lights. So there will be income coming in from people outside of our city that will help us fund this. We actually drove to Grapevine this past Christmas, since we weren't doing our lights, to see Christmas lights. So it is definitely an interest in the Pasadena area. And if you have any interest in seeing how people are interested in these lights, look on Facebook for Buffkin Christmas Wonderland and read all of the comments that we received when we announced that we would not be doing the Christmas lights anymore. It was heart wrenching to me to hear all the positive comments. People love to see Christmas lights. It's a great family tradition. Yes, there will probably be some traffic problems, but we have a great strawberry festival and we have a great rodeo and we have parking problems and traffic issues, but that's part of being involved in the community. We have a great police department that handles that for us and I think it would be a great asset to the City of Pasadena.
Thank you Ms. Buffkin. I really appreciate it. And my family really misses being at your house every Christmas. Ernest Cook.
Thank you. Mayor Wagner and members of the council, I represent the Houston Endowment, which has offered a grant of $300,000 to the Houston Parks Board to help with the cost of a healthy parks plan for the City of Pasadena. And your approving this plan is on your agenda tonight. I wanted to read a statement from the Houston Endowment into the record here. The Houston Endowment looks forward to supporting the City of Pasadena in this important study, in line with its mission to advance equity of opportunity for the people of greater Houston and to enhance the vibrancy of the region. Houston Endowment invests in initiatives to ensure that all residents have access to high-quality parks and trails. The Endowment appreciates the city's efforts to advance quality of life for its residents and is pleased to fund this planning initiative. So we hope you will approve this matter this evening. Two weeks ago, there was some discussion about the need to make sure that this plan gets implemented. And implementing typically takes some kind of funding, public funding. That's one of the areas of my expertise and I'll be very active in that portion of the plan. I wanted to make a few comments tonight on that. One is that the state of Texas gets funding from the Land and Water Conservation Fund, a federal funding source, which actually expired, the authority for that lapsed last October. And it's been an effort on the part of parks levers around the country and conservationists to get that renewed. And very good news is that last month, the Congress overwhelmingly approved permanent reauthorization of the Land and Water Conservation Fund. And it was a strikingly bipartisan vote. The Senate was 92 to 8 in favor of this. So, you know, it's, it's wonderful that people from all sorts of different parts of the political spectrum can come together around parks and we certainly hope that will be the case in Pasadena as well. Now a little closer to home, there's a great opportunity with a forthcoming constitutional amendment in the state of Texas that will dedicate the sporting goods sales tax, this is an existing tax, it's the existing sales tax that is levied on sporting goods, that will be dedicated permanently to the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department if this amendment succeeds. So that would be $170 million a year, starting now, that will increase with time, I imagine. And a substantial portion of that funding will go to local grants to communities around And a substantial portion of that funding will go to local grants to communities around Texas. So, we're going to make sure when this plan for the City of Pasadena is completed, that it will meet all the state standards so that Pasadena can be eligible for this funding.
Thank you so much. Bob Ellis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. You will be voting on a resolution tonight, accepting $26,000 worth of infield work at the ballfields at Crenshaw Park. This donation was from the Pasadena Girls Softball Association. The Parks and Recreation Department worked closely with the various baseball and softball organizations within the city to maintain safe and quality fields. We want to thank Pasadena Girls Softball, Board of Directors for approving this work. And I'd like to recognize Kelsey Walters. Kelsey, if you'll come on up this way. She is a president of this league. I won't ask how many generations, but her mom and dad, or Don and Brendan McLean, they were presidents of this organization for many years. And she's next on the list, but I'm going to turn it over to her.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis.
We want to thank the-
And she comes straight from softball practice.
Yes, sorry, I came straight from, obviously, I'm a coach as well. We want to thank the city for allowing us to do this. Without their approval, it would not have happened. But most importantly, we want to thank any former players, any players we have now, to allow this to happen. Anything they did within fundraising, donations, anything like that, was put into the use of maintaining the facility and making sure that we stay on the right track and that we are known as having, having one of the best facilities within the Houston area. So, if it wasn't for them, we would not be here where we are. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Hey, Bob, is that for just Crenshaw, or is it for all parks?
That was just Crenshaw Park.
Okay, perfect.
Four ballfields.
That's what they mean, not all parks, not just one. Thank you. Jerrica?
Mayor and Council, it's a pleasure again to speak before you. As you can see, the Parks Department is very busy and active right now. We have all sorts of things going on. I don't need to, I don't need to reiterate the senior pageant, the great work going on at our softball fields, all of our work with those. And, you know, importantly, our master plan that we're going to be working on, we're very excited to get, to get going on that and, you know, see how we can better the parks and provide more opportunity for, for the citizens of Pasadena. I guess a couple of things I wanted to mention, too, on your agenda, you also have some resolutions for, so donations of trees in there. So, we've been working with some organizations. Pinnacle ART has donated some plants, some trees that we planted at Burke Crenshaw Park. Trees for Houston has also donated, you know, 700, what's our number on there? 700 something trees. I remember in the rough, it's on my head. We planted almost, we planted almost 900 trees or so in the city this, since February. So, we've been doing our part to help green up the city and, you know, provide a great opportunity. Trees do so many things for, for us. They provide shade, they help to clean the air, nothing having to do with what's going on now, but they will help. They, you know, they, they provide a social benefit. I think, you know, most of us would enjoy sitting in the shade in a, in a park, especially on a hot summer day. But we, we just want to make sure we, we recognize these groups, and we're thankful that we're able to do these things and, and help to beautify the, the city and, and do that. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, all your hard work. Presentation minutes, March 5th, 2019, 10:00 AM. Motion, Casados, Second Lehman. Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Brings us down to progress payments.
Motion.
Motion, Wheeler. Second, Katon. Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Brings us down to finance resolutions.
Motion.
Motion, Shane Bynum. Second Lehman. Any questions?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Want to abstain from anything in regards to tax money?
Yes, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Brings us down, Madam Secretary, to the final readings. Oh, that's right. Personnel, A and B. Motion, Katon. Second Lehman. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
We have one no. Okay, now we're down. No, Casados, yes. Thank you, sir. Finance Department. Well, that was Personnel, A and B. We just voted on it. That's okay. Now, final readers.
Ordinance 201938, contract with R&amp;M Quality Construction LLC for demolition and reconstruction of single-family home at 1501 Briarwood Drive, Pasadena, Texas, $213,950. Ordinance 201939, contract with Berg Oliver Associates Incorporated for environmental assessment services for the City of Pasadena, Texas Drainage and Flood Mitigation Program, CIP Number DMEA, for a total of $299,295.05 from the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Account. Ordinance 201940, enter local agreement with the Houston Parks Board for the Pasadena Healthy Parks Plan. Ordinance 201941, accepting, acceptance of modification number two to grant agreement improvement by ordinance number 201869 between the Executive Office of the President, Office of the National Drug Control Policy, ONDCP, and the City of Pasadena for grant number G18HN0009A in the amount of $6,900 for additional reimbursement of expenses associated with the participation in the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Areas, HIDTA, program for the total amount awarded, $57,300. Ordinance 201942, amend ordinance 201811, which authorized and approved annual consulting agreement for employee benefits from Gallagher Benefit Services Incorporated by providing an updated exhibit, updated Exhibit B, Client Coverage Acknowledgement and Compensation Disclosure Statement. Ordinance 201944, acceptance of an Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG, from the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Justice Programs Bureau of Justice Assistant in the amount of $48,213 to be used to fund overtime for the additional police activities, activities to enhance public safety, reduce crime, and for crime prevention.
Motion, Shane Bynum. Second Lehman. Any questions?
Mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
I'd like to amend, excuse me, ordinance 2019038. I'd make a-
Motion. Go ahead.
Second.
Go ahead, second. Go ahead, sir.
I would, sorry, my voice went out. To amend ordinance 2019038 on final reading to substitute the attached pages to reflect a change in the appropriate amount from $213,950 to $237,262.50.
Okay, all in, all in favor for the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Who, sir?
Shane Bynum. Any, any opposed? Okay, now that we'll go back to the regular vote.
Mayor?
Go ahead, sir.
I would like, excuse me, Mayor, I would like to make a motion to amend ordinance 201943. Do I have a second? Senator?
We have, go ahead.
Mayor, we separate them now. We separate them?
Yeah, we're not there yet, sir. We have to wait.
Okay. My apologies.
Okay, get back to the vote on everything else. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes? Madam Secretary?
Ordinance 201943, enter local agreement with the City of Grand Prairie, Texas for provision of a Christmas light display.
Motion. We have a motion, Bass, Second by Katon. Any questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'd like to make a motion to amend on this. We are going to try to get funding from the industrial district to cover the cost. As it stands right now, the plan is to charge anywhere from $20 to $25 per vehicle to see these Christmas lights, but if the Parks Department can get industry to cover the full cost, I'm making a motion to amend to not charge citizens of Pasadena to see these lights.
Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
No, no passes. Let's go back to the original vote. All in favor?
Aye.
There's not discussion on the original vote.
Discussion on the matter.
Okay, go ahead. Let's go to discussion. Go ahead, sir.
All right. So, I'm not going to be supporting this, and the reason being is because we have $200,000 that we're going to have to come up with originally, of taxpayer money. And then we're going to turn around and charge taxpayers again $20 to $25 a vehicle so that they can go see the lights they already paid for. I think that's double taxation, quite honestly. And I think my main concern with this is the fact that citizens in my district and District D aren't crying or asking, "Hey, you know what, let's, I, I want, I want lights this year." What my citizens in my district want are sidewalks. They want streets fixed. Those are the important issues that they want. $200,000, how many, how many feet of sidewalk can we put in? I mean, there's a lot of different things we can do with $200,000. As a matter of fact, I have a woman in my district now that's trying to get a petition signed so she can get sidewalks put on her street. I think $200,000 would be better served putting sidewalks in, fixing roads, speed bumps, whatever the case may be. Helping somebody with, with, help with another grant, fixing homes, doing programs like that. Why aren't we doing things of that nature? I think that this is a great idea, don't get me wrong. It's nice to have, but at the same time, money could be spent other places. I will not be supporting this, and I think that if you want to talk about quality of life and having nice things for citizens to do, let's start by fixing their streets and drains and sidewalks. That I pass.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking at the audience, I see about 90% of you are senior citizens. I'm real proud of you. That's great. The man love administration fought to freeze your taxes. Your taxes are frozen when you get 65 and disabled and above. Your taxes never will go up. And that's why I'm proud of that I did, because fiscal responsibility is an important thing. And it really didn't cost that much to freeze your taxes. And now, I'm talking about fiscal responsibility. They come to us every time, this is going to be great for the city, but I'm talking about the people under 65. I've been knocking doors, I've talked to other people, they pay $12,000 a year in taxes, they can't pay their taxes, they're having a hard time, even though the seniors, I think this is the greatest place in the state of Texas for a senior retiring, because of their taxes. You don't pay any taxes, they're frozen, they're very minimum. But it's people under 65. In the last two years, we had a tax increase, all because of fiscal irresponsibility. I'm talking about fiscal responsibility. I'm talking about the other people in this town. Knock doors, a lot of seniors, their taxes are frozen, but they're living on Social Security. They can't afford to go out there, and they say, they don't even know how much it costs, $25, $35. And also, they talk about how, I've heard this wrist before. The rodeo, I don't know if they're making money, they have been losing money, but they give scholarships. The convention center, it's losing money. The slip and slide out there at Strawberry Park, they talk about people coming from all over the state of Texas to use that, they're losing money, they're only open about four days a week now. When they had beer by the, for the north side, open, you know, changing liquor laws, all steakhouse and everything else going to be on the north side. Nothing has happened. And the mall over here, they're going to have a big shopping center there and make money by the city helping fund it. Mayor, point of order.
I agree with that point of order, sir.
That is fiscal responsibility, that's part of the discussion.
No, that-
It is part of the discussion.
You're veering way off the course, sir.
No, it's fiscal responsibility.
Sir, I just ruled on it, you're way off the course.
It's fiscal responsibility.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else have any other comments?
Well, I'd like to finish about three minutes.
That's it, sir. You're finished. Go ahead.
Mayor, we have some wonderful examples of what has been successful in this city. And one of the projects that has been tremendously successful in this city, and how we easily forget during a time of tragedy when we had Harvey, was the Team Up to Clean Up Initiative that came forward from a group that's here in City Hall that developed a partnership with industry and businesses, not just the industrial district, but businesses and residents and, and the industrial entities along the Ship Channel. And they helped many, many citizens here within Pasadena. This is another opportunity for us to use the same committee group that has a vision for our future to allow them the opportunity to explore. Nothing's set in concrete yet on a physical price of what it's going to cost to have this light show put up at the convention center. That's all to be negotiated and, and to be worked out, and that'll come after the sponsorships, and that will determine the price of the admission. Folks, if we just said no to everything, we start going backwards. We have to give citizens an opportunity that have thoughts and, and think a little bit outside of the box to bring something different to Pasadena. You know, it's going to help our convention center with the electricity out there. It's going to help the infrastructure out there. We have industrial people that go out and use Campbell Hall. You know, we need to be looking at every opportunity to provide our citizens to explore and to grow, and not just to say, "We can't do it because that's not physical responsibility." Well, yes, it is if you-
Thank you, sir.
-manage your time and manage your budgets.
Anybody else have other comments? All in-
Mayor?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
And let me just mention, somebody mentioned something about double taxation, which is not true, but here's what we do. We spend taxpayers' money to make upgrades to the convention center. We use taxpayers' money to make upgrades to the rodeo grounds. All of those grounds is where we're talking about this light display going on. Now, we in turn have a strawberry festival, we charge people to get in to go to the strawberry festival. We have a rodeo, we charge people to go to the rodeo out there. We have a barbecue cook-off, we charge people money. Without a pass, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. All in favor? Go ahead, sir.
So, yes, it's, it's true that we have rodeos, we have cook-offs, we have strawberry festivals. The, the City of Houston has a zoo, it's all supported in part by taxpayer funds. The major difference is, is that the proceeds to those ventures go back to scholarships. They go back to helping the community. The, the City of Houston Zoo, they give free field trips to children. The difference with this is, is the City of Pasadena has come up with a plan to use taxpayer-funded money to then in turn charge taxpayers to enter a facility they've already paid for, and $25 a pop. And if you don't know, in, in some of the northern districts of Pasadena where the median household income is $34,000, $25 is a lot of money. I, I think that we should be doing Christmas lights, and I think if it's going to be fully funded by industry, then why are we charging citizens again on top of it? I don't think, you know, people talk about Christmas becoming a business, Christmas losing that holiday spirit, Christmas doing things in, in just good nature. Well, the City of Pasadena has come with the plan to try to profit off of citizens in that time. And I know some people, Amber spoke about the Christmas lights they put up. I don't know if you charge people to look at those lights, but I think if we want to put up lights in the City of Pasadena, we should, but we shouldn't charge taxpayers twice to do it. More importantly, from a business perspective, the entire burden is on the city. If this, this company's coming in and saying, "We will, we want $100,000," and you can charge people at the gate to reach that $100,000, but if you don't make it, we still want our $100,000. What kind of business deal is this where the city takes on the entire burden, the entire uncertainty? And so, and furthermore, the City of Pasadena is not a business. It's funded by taxpayers, taxpayers to provide services to do good for the community, and unfortunately, this seems like a scheme just to draw more money out of taxpayers.
All in favor?
Mayor.
You'll, you'll, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I'm coming. All we're voting on here on tonight is, somebody's microphone's on besides mine, I think. We're, we're voting on the agreement. We haven't, we haven't said how much it's going to cost to get in. We haven't said we're not going to provide discounts for seniors. All we're doing is voting on this agreement. And I, I'm confident, as Councilman Shane Bynum mentioned, we have people that are very good at getting industry to participate in city projects. And I feel like that this will be good for Pasadena, and I'm confident that we, excuse me, we will get support from industry to help raise some of the cost of this. And I, I do think it's good for Pasadena. It's a one-year agreement, we do it one year. If we don't like it-
If we don't like it, if it's not successful, we're not locked in. This is one year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
We have three. It passes. Madam Secretary, we're going to go down to first readings.
Mayor, can we have a roll call, please?
I think we, we know who all voted yes and who all voted no.
I didn't hear your votes.
It was all yes, three nos.
Thank you.
Let's, let's move on, Madam Secretary.
Ordinance 2019-45. Sorry. Ordinance 2019-45. Authorizing and approving transfer to Lone Star NGL Pipeline LP of 20-inch natural gas liquids NGL Pipeline Franchise granted by ordinance number 2011-169 to ETC NGL Transport LLC.
Motion Bass?
Second.
Second Wheeler? Any questions?
Mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
Um, I've, I've mentioned before, uh, about these pipeline, uh, grants and whatnot that we give to pipeline companies. And I know of a couple of areas in my district where pipeline work has been done. And after the pipeline work is done, uh, they haven't left the property the way it was when they started. And I do want to see our Public Works Department, uh, follow up with these pipeline companies and make sure that everything goes back the way it was before they started.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, Mayor. We discussed this over a year ago. And the pipelines and the franchise artists says, just like the city artists, they're contractors. The property shall be left in the condition that it was before. And it's up to the city to enforce that ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
I, I think, um, the majority, if not all of the council members feel the same way. Um, there's work being done throughout our city. And, uh, we should hold these folks accountable for keeping, uh, the property in pristine condition when they first found it that way.
Thank you, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance 2019. I'm sorry. 2019-46. Amend code of ordinances at Chapter 30, Police, Article 4, Alarm Systems by amending sections 30-72, 30-73, 30-74, 30-76, 30-77, 30-78, 30-79, 30-80, and 30-83.
Motion.
Motion Wheeler?
Second.
Second. Harrison? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance 2019-47. Extend annual contract with Century Asphalt LTD for the purchase of asphalt emulsified intact foil.
Motion.
Motion Shane Byrne?
Second.
Second Lehman? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance 2019-48. Extend annual contract with Pasadena Auto Collision for Vehicle Body Repair and Painting Services.
Motion Lehman? Second Harrison? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance 2019-49. Extend annual contract with Novus Group Wood Group LP for wood grinding services.
Motion Casados. Second Katon? Any questions?
Mayor?
Go ahead, sir.
Comment.
Go.
This Novus, it's a contract I used to enjoy every year they'd come by. And we'd get the revenues off the wood that they sold. And I miss them this year. Thank you, sir.
You bet, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance 2019-50. Authorized purchase of 2019 LJG 450 AJ Deutz Diesel 4x4 Boom Lift from Briggs Equipment, $74,810.40.
Motion Wheeler? Second Bass? Any questions? All in favor? Go ahead, sir.
I don't know if it's writers. I think it's supposed to be JLG, boom, with the boom lift. I'm just saying. So.
Did I say it wrong?
No, no, it says LG.
Oh.
It says LJG.
You gotta, you gotta watch me because I'll say it all wrong.
It's a JLG, JLG.
That'd be correct.
Okay.
I appreciate that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance 2019-51. Contract with Marcon Services LLC for the Shaw Street Reconstruction Project from Carl Street to McMaster's Avenue, CIP number S107 for a total appropriation of $2,962,495.83 from Pasadena Economic Development Corporation in the 2018 Certificate of Obligation Fund balance account.
Motion.
Motion Lehman? Second, Shane Byrne? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance 2019-52. Contract with Marcon Services LLC for the Lafferty Road Improvements Project from Spencer Highway to Freesia Road, CIP number S048 for a total appropriation of $3,023,986.46 from the 2018 Certificate of Obligation Fund balance account.
Motion.
Motion Bass?
Second.
Second Wheeler? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance 2019-53. Authorized applying, authorized applying for a grant of $13,778.78 from the State of Texas Office of the Governor, 2019 State Homeland Security Program for funding a long-range acoustic hailing and warning device, LRAD, for the Police Department Crisis Negotiation Team, CNT.
So moved.
Moved by Harrison. Second by Shane Byrne? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance 2019-54. Authorized applying for a grant of $37,108.32 from the State of Texas Office of the Governor, 2019 State Homeland Security Program for funding ballistic helmets and ballistic vests for the Police Department Crisis Negotiation Team, CNT.
Motion Lehman? Second by Casados? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance 2019-55. Authorizing applying for a grant of $64,928 from the State of Texas Office of the Governor, 2019 State Homeland Security Program for funding two bomb suits for the Police Department Bomb Squad.
Motion Casados?
Second.
Second Bass? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance 2019-56. Authorized applying for a grant of $86,713 from the State of Texas Office of the Governor, 2019 State Homeland Security Program for funding ballistic helmets, ballistic vests, and communication headsets for the Police Department Special Weapons and Tactics.
Motion.
Motion Shane Byrne?
Second.
Second Lehman? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance 2019-57. Authorized applying for a grant of $132,250.50 from the State of Texas Office of the Governor, 2019 State Homeland Security Program for funding mobile vehicle barriers and related equipment for the Police Department Traffic Unit.
Motion.
Motion Casados?
Second.
Second Bass? Any questions?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
I see these, uh, grants for the Police Department. And I think it's the city council responsibility to give the Police Department the proper tools to do their job. And they're doing an excellent job. And I want to thank them for a hard job they're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance 2019-58. Authorized applying for a grant of $66,585 from the State of Texas Office of the Governor, 2020 Justice Assistance Grant Program for funding a command trailer for the Police Department Crisis Negotiation Team, CNT.
Motion.
Motion Shane Byrne? Second Wheeler? Any questions?
Mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
I have to concur with Mr. Harrison on, um, this grant money. Uh, we're looking at almost $400,000 worth of grants to our police department. And, um, it's a privilege to be able to, to have some really great grant writers and also to be able to approve these for our police department.
Absolutely. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Y'all are killing me with the buzzer over here. Ordinance 2019-59. Contract with Bob, I'm sorry, Rob Pilteer Construction for replacement installation of operable parson, portions, portions of the.
Petition.
Thank you.
I'm here to help.
Of the Pasadena Convention Center, $375,104.40.
Motion Lehman? Second Katon? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance 2019-60. Contract with AVIA Incorporated for the purchase of telecommunication equipment and software upgrade, $166,056.60.
Motion Bass? Second Katon? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance 2016-61. License agreement with the Board of Education of the Pasadena Independent School District for the use of select parking spaces at the Clean Streets Department property located at 1727 Red Bluff Road during the construction of the new Red Bluff Elementary School.
Motion.
Motion Casados?
Second.
Second Harrison? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Madam Secretary brings down the resolutions.
Okay. Resolution 2019-31. Accept the 2018 Pasadena Police Department racial profiling report as presented.
Motion.
Motion Shane Byrne? Second Lehman? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Resolution 2019-32. Accepting donations of 495 trees valued at $7,215 from Trees for Houston for planting of trees throughout city parks.
Motion.
Motion Bass? Second, was it Lehman?